... 12, 2017, meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. Welcome to everyone joining us here in council chambers as well as those watching or listening through Oshkosh Media. We are pleased to have citizens participate in the local government, so welcome to one and all. Would the city clerk please take the roll?
Paul Mary?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Pansky?
Here.
Crowsey?
Here.
Peck?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Present seven.
We will now have the invocation led by Councilman Repel Mary and the Pledge of Allegiance, so everyone, everyone stand please.
As we gather tonight, we're grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
(coughing)
(inaudible) the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation united in the world with liberty and justice for all.
And we have certificates of appreciation to our young students. And I'll read it just once, but your names. This is a certificate of appreciation. All of the many wonderful things that can happen to a person, none is perhaps more wonderful than living in America and being an American. Many deeds, both large and small, are necessary to nurture the growth and greatness of this nation to be up to its honored position. You, Cash Collier, and Eve Collier of Merrill Elementary School have helped for on December 12, 2017, you led the city council and the people of Oshkosh and the Pledge of Allegiance and the council chambers of our city, so thank you. And you're Cash. I'm gonna ask you your name. Your name, age, where you go to school, and now that you've had about a week in school, what's your new favorite subject?
Um, my name is Cash Keller. And I go to Merrill School. My new favorite subject is, of course, gym. Who doesn't?
Thank you. And you're Eve. I'll ask the same question.
I'm Eve Keller. I go to Merrill Middle School, and my favorite subject is probably social studies.
Okay, thank you. Well, you can stay and watch part of social studies or go home and study. (laughing) Do you have something to give to you? Okay, that's, oh, thank you. Would you like to read it for us?
Um, thank you for a new New York Avenue.
You're welcome.
That's pretty cool.
Thank you.[191.65][191.65](applause) It was long overdue.
Where's James Robbie? I think this belongs to Public Works.
Would you like to come up and accept it and say a few words?
I don't need to say anything, Phil.
If you, alright, that's fine.
I, I just wanna thank them and thank everybody else. We are working on getting the streets done.
I know very well. Now, next, next we have a... Next we have a proclamation. Who will be accepting the proclamation from the city of Oshkosh?
I think that'll be me, Mr. Mayor. I don't think Jake can come from behind the screen.
Whereas Oshkosh Media has ensured transparency in local government by covering meetings of eight different governmental bodies, including the Oshkosh Common Council, the Oshkosh Area School Board, and the Winnebago County Board. And whereas Oshkosh Media has given a voice to the Oshkosh community for 30 years and served as an outlet for nonprofits and community members to share their message and express their opinions. And whereas Oshkosh Media continues to explore, implement the latest social media and online tools to provide the both, the best possible product to engage and inform Oshkosh citizens and local government. And whereas Oshkosh Media continues to provide an important informational resource for Oshkosh residents during emergency situations. And whereas Oshkosh Media has been recognized on a national and state level for countless programming excellence, awards for municipal and community programs through the last three decades. Now therefore, I, Steve Cummings, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, to hereby proclaim Saturday, September 9, 2017, is the 30th anniversary of Oshkosh Media in the city of Oshkosh, and I call upon the citizens of the city of Oshkosh to support and utilize the valuable service that Oshkosh Media provides our community. And accepting will be City Manager Roloff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I wanna thank the staff of Oshkosh Media. Just waved Jake in the back there, the man behind the curtain, kinda like the Wizard of Oz back there. Really, there's, the staff of Oshkosh Media brings to life what we do, what we can provide the public with, open and transparent government. And it's very, I think it's a very important part. I think that's what sets Oshkosh apart from a lot of communities. It's, it's more than just televising the public meetings, which we all do, but it's also providing information, giving insight into, to what we're doing, why we're doing things. Whether it's things that we do in Public Works, we just talked about New York Avenue, or things that people maybe don't know about as much, the senior center, our boards and commissions, as we've been doing recently. They do such a good job at helping us tell our story, and telling our story is so important. So, Mr. Mayor, I wanna thank you for being there on Saturday for the 30th anniversary, that we did a test drive of the proclamation then as well.
Yes, we did.
But we did real well then, too. So, I wanna thank you and thank the council for your continued support of Oshkosh Media.
Very briefly, some of you may notice, we have changed the formatting of how we proceed with the meetings. We've become a little more technological savvy, or I have, so kind of bear with us. This is our first time after a couple of rehearsals yesterday, so. With that said, the first thing on the agenda is citizen statements to council. And I'll ask the city clerk, have we, anyone that registered to speak at this, at this time?
Yes, we do, Mayor. Our first individual is Janie Robson, 815 CB Avenue. If you would come up to the podium, please.
This isn't my strong suit, but I've been gone and I came back, and it came to my attention that you're thinking about getting rid of that, of course, which was granted to the city of Oshkosh. This city doesn't have any green space, okay? Once it's gone, it's gone. Oshkosh Truck owns that. They can move into Walmart, they can move into Plexus, 'cause that's all concrete and it's never gonna be green again. And if you read anything science, we caused, we caused these terrible hurricanes because we're taking away all of our green space. So, I think you should just forget it. It's, it's absolutely the, the worst idea. And if you read any of those letters from the editor, they're heartbreaking, 'cause this is all the people have, the common people, the people that work at Oshkosh Truck, not these executives. If they working, it doesn't matter where their office is. I don't know what it was like today, 'cause I was working. So, really, take it off, keep it to the people. There's no green space in this town, none, none. Monomity Park and South Park. So, please, just take it off. Look at this. And shame on any one of you that paid attention.
Your time is up.
Our next individual is Linda Spazinski Wilkins, W-872 Leslie Lane, Green Lake, Wisconsin.
Hello. I said Linda Spazinski Wilkins because my homestead is 1711 Pinocchio Street. My family still lives there. I am the grandmother of children who go to Oshkosh Public Schools, and my son and his family live in Oshkosh. I have a vested interest in, in this community, and I am really appalled that this community would consider selling its public parks. Last night, at the Parks Commission meeting, the League of Women Voters spoke, and they are against this, and they were saying that Oshkosh has less green space than most other places in the United States, less than the required green space. And yet, these people, and I wish Mr. Roloff would even look at me, 'cause I'm looking at you, would think about, we need that green space, we need more green space. This public park belongs to some 68,000 people, all of whom live in Oshkosh. It does not just belong to you or any of you. And I would think about what you can do for the city of Oshkosh to really work on expanding the green space, making things better for the city of Oshkosh, making Rainbow Park better, having bike trails, making that golf course so that it can be used for cross-country skiing and bike trails, et cetera, et cetera. When I was at the Park Commissioners thing last night, I heard people who were not golfers, who are really pro-green space for Oshkosh. And when I read the papers, I pay attention to what's going on here. I think there's some things that are really not quite right here, and I hope that the people of Oshkosh stand up and get to the bottom of it, and that you treasure this, this park that's also about 100 years old. So, do I have any more time?
About a minute or so.
Okay. Do you know that that park has done a lot for the children of Oshkosh? Do you know that prior to this present golf course that Hank Detloff, an Oshkosh resident, designed part of the golf course? Do you know that Bill Detloff grew up on Oshkosh Avenue, became a golf pro, and is a big guy in PGA? Do you know that my brother Mike Spazinski, who grew up on that golf course, became a golf pro? Ted Dunker, Will McAvoy, that has helped a lot of people to form who they have begun, and that's part of your responsibility. Oshkosh Truck has lots of opportunities, and I'm glad Oshkosh Truck is an employer in Oshkosh. I treasure that. But the people of Oshkosh and the green space is more important, and please consider that. Okay, and I'm very, you know, I'm, I'm very respectful of you. I hope you are of the people of Oshkosh. Thank you.
No other individuals are signed up at this time.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. This is section F, items 1 through 16. Consent agenda items are those of routine administrative nature that are voted on by this council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common councilman requests and it be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. And city clerk, do we have anyone that wishes to speak to any of the items on the consent agenda?
Yes. For item 14A, which is Resolution 17454, we have Rick Helms, 419 Sterling Avenue here to answer questions for the council. So, Mr. Helms, if you'd like to come to the podium, please.
Does anybody have questions about the application?
I apologize, it's B.
That's right. Councilman Palmary?
This is on 17454, right?
No.
No. Four sixty-seven. Four sixty-seven.
Four sixty-seven. Alright. My apologies.
Apparently, no one on the council has any further questions, so. If there's no one for the public that speak, wants to speak to anything on here, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second. So moved. Second. Councilman Herman?
Actually, yes. It'll be Resolution 17-448, Mr. Robbie. And since we're moving along, I, it's really 448, 449, 450, and probably 451. We got four change orders again, and it seems like every council meeting, we're getting change orders. And it seems like when you read the information, it's like staff forgot something, or the project was extended, or AECON missed something, or whatever. Don't we look at these things in advance? I mean, I know the arena was six months instead of a year, but a lot of these projects have been approved in the CIP, now we gotta reopen the CIP, or adjust the CIP. It just seems to be going on and on and on, and nothing ever gets corrected.
There are always going to be unforeseen circumstances anytime you start digging a hole in the ground. For example, the change order for Contract 1601 is final change order for final quantities and addressing any unforeseen issues that were encountered when, when we were out digging. Change orders for 1706 and 1712, those were additional concrete repairs, not additionally associated with those projects that are being added into those projects to address some issues that were identified with a couple of streets. For example, 1706, we are adding some pavement that desperately needed to be repaired near Oshkosh West High School. Seven, the change order for 1712, we are adding some pavement restoration on Packer Avenue that needs to be addressed. So, neither of those were originally a part of that project. It was as we continued through the summer, usually, you know, there are additional concrete repairs that are needed. In this case, both of these projects had very favorable bids, prices on those, and the contractors were willing to continue to honor those prices for this additional work, so we took advantage of those favorable bid prices to get this additional work done.
Okay. I mean, I under, understand, you know, our soil around here is not very good, and a lot of these projects are 30, 40 years from the last time they were done. It just seems like almost every one of our street projects, we either add to it, or there's a change order or something, and...
Like I said, the two, you know, the work that was added for 1706 and 1712 were not related to the original bid.
Right.
It was other work that needed to be done within the city, and we took advantage of the favorable bids on those projects.
Okay. Very good. Appreciate it.
Councilperson Palmary?
Um, yes. Kathy Snell regarding 17454. Just looks like there's a, maybe a typo or something here. Looks like there's been a request for amplified music to be extended to 11:00 a.m., and I was just wondering...
That would be a typo. I apologize. It should be 11:00 p.m. on Saturday night.
But aren't we already at 11:00 p.m. for Saturdays?
Um, so that, that's where they're gonna be re, looking at some of the ordinances and things around the noise ordinance, because in different sections, it's, it's different. So, if you're in a park, it should be 10 o'clock, but if you have a beer garden outside of a park, it's 11. They're not having a beer garden, they're having it on the property of dockside. So, they'll be outside, but there's not a beer garden, because they already have a patio established, and it's being held indoors. So, they're still looking to have amplified music, so people may still have music that they can hear within, out, you know, outside of the inside band.
Okay.
So, they're not, they're not under, they don't fall under the beer garden.
Okay.
So, it's a 10 o'clock ordinance.
Okay. I see. Alright. So, it's 11:00 p.m., and it's because they don't really fit into it.
Right.
So, I get that. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Councilperson Pansky?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 17453, if the city clerk, we are establishing a new voting ward. If she just would like to explain why and where the new polling place will be, and where our residents can apply if they would like to work there.
Okay. Five years ago, the council approved the Gailman attachment. That five years has expired, so now there's two voters involved in that attachment. They will now be voting at Carl Trager.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I see no other one wishing to speak, so I will ask clerk to take the roll.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have three pending ordinances, and city clerk, is anyone wishing to speak to any one of these three?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. The first is ordinance 17-457, modified parking regulations on South Park Avenue. I would like a motion and a second?
So moved?
Second.
Would you please take the roll?
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have ordinance 17-458, approved zone change from SMU Suburban Mixed Use District to SMU-PD Suburban Mixed Use District with planned development overlay, 1126 South Kohler Avenue. Plan commission does recommend approval. I would look for a motion and a second?
So moved?
Second.
Councilman Palmary?
Uh, yes, Mr. Berich. Just a question. So, they're looking at changing this to suburban mixed use. Could you just maybe explain for the public why that would be suburban mixed use as opposed, as opposed to urban mixed use?
They're not actually changing the suburban mixed use. That's already classified as suburban mixed use. They're adding the planned development overlay.
So, they're just adding the, okay.
Correct.
Alright.
And the purpose was to deal with the center signage that's out there.
The center?
Yeah, there's a, the, where pot bellies going, they're breaking off that parcel. That parcel is part of that entire assemblage for the, for the shopping center out there, and the sign is remaining for now, so that's why they need the zoning actions that's being requested.
Thank you.
I see no one on the council wishing to speak, so would you please take the roll?
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have ordinance 17-459, approved zone change from I Institutional District to SMU-PD Suburban Mixed Use District, planned development overlay for a property located at 1860 Wisconsin Street. Plan commission does recommend approval. I'll look for a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second?
I see no one on the council wishing to speak, so would you please take the...
Wait, wait. I thought you were gonna ask the public, so...
We already did that.
Yep. Just one correction, 17459, and it looks like we have just, again, probably a typo in one of the references. It says industrial instead of institutional.
I didn't do that one, but...
What is it, what is it saying there?
Section 1.
17459 in the resolution.
Was it an error in the staff report?
Looks like a typo.
No, this is the actual resolution. So, in the purpose, it says zone change from institutional, but in section 1, it actually says from industrial. Just, page 177.
Actually, in the ordinances, we give the city clerk the ability to correct those, so we don't need a, an amendment. We'll just correct it in the final version.
Thank you.
I see no one wishing to discuss any further. Would you please take the roll?
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
We have new, one new ordinance. City clerk, does anyone wish to speak to that?
I do not have anyone listed.
Okay, there will be no formal action taken on this item at this meeting. It is ordinance 17-460, approved section 16-49 in print E, closed print, pertaining to residential rental inspections to permit delinquent fees to be placed upon property tax bills at special charges. I'd like a motion and a second?
No.
I'm sorry.
No.
I even highlighted that. We have six new resolutions. City clerk, does anyone wish to speak to any of these resolutions?
Yes. For item number 21, Resolution 17461, we have Corey Gay, 5521 Spring Brook Road, Amherle. If you'd come to the podium, please.
Yeah, Corey Gay, on behalf of Kelly's Bar, we've been having beer gardens. It's been a longtime tradition with the university and Kelly's. In the past, we have been granting this waiver, so I really haven't prepared to promote earlier in the day. It's important that we have this event. It's been the tradition. It allows new upcoming students of 21 age and older that have turned in the summer to introduce to Kelly's Bar. So, not only does this event affect us this day, it affects us all year long. Due to the nature of the students not coming out until later, we used to have bands in the afternoon, and they failed. It wasn't worth the cost of having the bands earlier. So, tendency with them coming out later, this extra hour, makes it affordable for me to even have a band or even do this event. So, I would ask him for your permission to extend the waiver to midnight. Any questions?
Councilperson Palmary?
Yes, Mr. Gay, we talked on the phone yesterday, I believe it was, regarding the hardship that you expressed. Were you aware that the letter that you sent requesting that variance was dated 2015, and it was also in April when you applied for this variance to exceed the timeframe and the amplified music for the May graduation? The letters have never been changed, and there's no hardship shown?
Um, actually, since we've been doing this, I've been just using that same letter and changing the dates on it. And it's been for, probably about eight times, I've used that same letter, and missed it. I was in a hurry to get the paperwork in, and I missed the date on the town.
I see no one who wishes to ask a showman question, so thank you. Any motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Discussion, Councilman, Deputy Mayor Herman?
Thank you very much. I just wanna, I don't know if it was staff, or if it was Mr. Gay himself, I just appreciate the fact that you're facing a stage away from, more towards the west, which makes it amplify out over some of the university and then the river, which will keep it away from some of the residential areas in, in that area, even though a lot of that is student housing, but I still appreciate that, the fact that you're, you're doing that. So, thank you very much.
Councilperson Palmary?
Uh, yes. So, I can appreciate celebrations. I am still puzzled, because the question was, you know, what is the actual hardship to the applicant for not granting the variance? And it just seems that we still don't have that information.
So, are you asking, asking the applicant for it?
I'm just saying I won't be supporting this, because we don't have evidence of hardship for complying with the actual timeframe.
Okay, I see nobody else, no one else wishing to speak?
I believe the gentleman addressed that, saying that he had, that they had tried in the afternoon previously, and that wasn't, wasn't the feasible, feasible, and so that he, what he's doing is he's doing this to extend it only until 11 o'clock, to make the event feasible for his business.
Minutes.
That was a part of his, that was a part of his statement. I clearly heard it.
The application was...
Nice, no one else that has a light on to speak? Do we have a motion?
And a second. Yeah.
I just had the understanding that he's losing money in the first hour. That's why he's wanting to extend it at the end of the party time, or whatever you wanna call it, to get his money back. I mean, it's a college area. It's not really a residential for neighborhoods. It's college kids that live there.
Councilperson Palmary.
Actually, we do live five blocks from there and hear every event, every celebration, and, um, I don't know about you, but I get a number of noise complaints. Aren't they supposed to be done by this time? Uh, so respectfully, the hardship is on the surrounding neighborhoods.
Is there anyone else in the council like to speak to this? Councilperson Allison Osby.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question would be, is have we had, um, I guess, has there been any other applications that staff can remember in this area that would go into the evening versus during the day? I think of like EAA, maybe timeframe, or is there others in which there's been any complaints from the neighborhoods, you know, within that, uh, reasonable block radius?
Chief Smith, could you come up for a minute, please? This deals with, uh, chapter seventeen of the code, extending the time from eleven o'clock to midnight. Do you anticipate any issues with your extending those hours that your officers may end up with more disturbance calls in that area, or more issues in that area by extending the music another hour past our ordinance?
In check with my third shift staff, we, we on occasion have received a couple of noise complaints, that we go address it, and, uh, we, we'll go to the establishment, whomever it is, and we, they generally will work with us, um, as it relates to their music, because they wanna be good neighbors, but we do receive some complaints.
Okay, thank you.
City Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Paul Mary.
No.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six, one.
Next is resolution seventeen dash four six two, support review of phosphorus water quality standards. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this?
I do not have anybody registered.
Okay. Any motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I'd maybe direct this.
Gonna hit your.
Oh. Um, I'd like to direct this to Mr. Roloff, just kind of explain what we're doing here, and, I mean, we do have the memo, but.
Sure. Uh, this actually, uh, was initiated by the League of Wisconsin Municipals, they were asking for, uh, cities to step forth, uh, on this phosphorus issue. We have been working with, uh, the DNR, and in turn, really, the EPA, in terms of our compliance with that, and we've worked, uh, through our attorney's office to get a, a settlement on that. Uh, we felt we needed to be more specific to our situation rather than more generic with what the league was asking for, so our level of support really recognizes that we've already, uh, reached some settlement with the, uh, the DNR already.
And if I'm not mistaken, we've actually met the requirements that we need to meet, but the DNR, because of where Oshkosh is situated and water flows into Winnebago County, or into Lake Winnebago, that we're the last one, we're the ones at the end of the pipeline, but phosphorus that enters the system up there that we have no control over is actually penalizing us. Is that correct?
Even though we discharge into the Fox River about a mile and a half up from Lake Winnebago, but they are applying the more restrictive, uh, Lake Winnebago criteria to the city of Oshkosh, yes.
Councilperson Palmary.
Yes, and I guess, um, Ms. Lawrence, and, um, or perhaps Mr. Robby could answer this. Um, have we in the past, um, had an educational component to how our residents can minimize the phosphorus? Obviously, it's not just where we are, the point and the non-point, but have we had any kind of public, um, education on the use of fertilizers and, and soaps and things that contribute to the, um, phosphorus content?
Well, actually, there is a statewide ban on phosphorus in lawn fertilizers and soaps were, should be discharged into the wastewater, uh, system, so get treated at the wastewater treatment plant, uh, but stormwater utility does work on, you know, information and, and education, you know, certainly there are other ways that phosphorus can get into.
Grass clippings and.
Right, and, and those are all, you know, annually, um, the stormwater utility puts, uh, an informational ad in the Northwestern, uh, our engineering division receives complaints from people who do witness grass clippings being blown into the street. We follow up and we educate, uh, those particular property owners as well, additionally versus, uh, the regular, uh, educational materials that are available.
The other thing we've done is, the city has, um, done a lot of process improvement at the plant, so that we've improved how we deal with phosphorus coming out of the plant in the past. The, the real difference with this is, we're going to be moving beyond a point where we can change our processes within the existing plant, and we would be looking at significant additions to or construction of a new plant to be able to, to meet this much more restrictive requirement, um, at a, at a pretty significant cost to the city, and obviously having to pass that on to tax, to ratepayers, sorry, to ratepayers under that system, and so, um, it's not a case where the city doesn't, doesn't wanna do anything about phosphorus, or doesn't wanna take actions. We are continually looking at improving our processes and doing the things, it's just a matter of what's reasonable, um, and that's what the league.
There was some timing to it, right?
I'm sorry?
There was some timing related to that as well.
Correct.
We're asking for support for additional.
To give us some additional time to deal with, with those issues, rather than, um, in one permit term. Our permit terms are five years long, that's, that's pretty quickly to make that type of significant investment.
Thank you.
If there are no question, further questions, we have a motion in a second, would you please take the roll?
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution seventeen dash four six three, approve specific implementation plan for Pot, Potbelly Restaurant, eleven twenty-six South Kohler Street. City Clerk?
I do not have anybody registered to speak.
Thank you, I need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
I see no one wishing to speak, would you please take the roll?
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution seventeen dash four six four, approve specific implementation plan amendment for a planned development amendment for a drive-through expansion, eighteen sixty-three Jackson Street. City Clerk, is there anyone who wishes to speak to this?
Yes, there's an individual. Stephen Killian, four-seven-one-three South Shore Avenue, Slinger.
And, um, I'm available to answer questions. Would you please take the.
Uh, it appears no one on the council wishes to ask you any questions.
Is it on the floor?
Not yet.
Do we have to put it on the floor first?
Uh-huh.
I need a motion in a second.
I move for approval.
Second.
Um, I believe, this is.
You have to hit your buzzer. We will go by the numbers.
Um, this is kind of follow-up to something we had on the consent agenda, is that McDonald's has purchased a small piece of property from the church, and is in the process of expanding their drive-through facility.
Correct.
And I would imagine the fact that you have made an agreement with the church to purchase the property, they're good with this, and that there's no issues and everything.
No, we worked through this from the start with them, and they're happy, and we're happy, so it's been a good process all the way through.
So this is just the last.
The last step in, in the process.
Dotting the last i.
Correct.
Okay.
I see no one else wishes to speak, would you please take the roll?
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution seventeen dash four six five, award bid to Vinton Construction Company, Inc., for contract number seventeen dash twenty-one, railroad transload, site location, one million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and nine cents. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak to this?
Yes, Brad from Watco Companies, four-six-three-seven Edgar Lane, Madison.
Good evening, Brad Piat, Watco Companies, representing Watco Companies and the Wisconsin and Southern Railroad. I just wanted to take the time to thank the city of Oshkosh staff and the city council for working together on this project. This has been a long-time nuisance for the community in this area with the vehicle ramp loading for Oshkosh Corporation that we do. So, uh, probably, it's been an issue for the three-plus years that I've been with the railroad, and, uh, we've been working on this issue and solution for two and a half years now, and it's gone through several iterations and changes, and it's finally gotten to this point, so we're really excited. Uh, this expanded terminal facility is really gonna help, uh, the industries in the region, Oshkosh region and, and the surrounding Fox Valley region, uh, bulk transloading and to, to put more, you know, industry into the Oshkosh area. And so we're excited for that growth that this facility will enable, and we are planning to grow our presence in this region even further as, as a service provider. Our next, next, hopefully, is, is the warehouse expansion, so that's, that's kind of where we're going, but, uh, one step closer now with this facility, so we just wanted to thank everybody and appreciate it.
Thank you. I now would like a motion and a, a woman, another person. Pam.
Um, we also have Jason from Watco, one-one-seven-nine McMahon Drive, Sun Prairie.
I didn't realize I was gonna be speaking as well today, so I probably entered the computer wrong, but, um, just wanted to say, this is gonna be a big job creator, um, this is the start of, of bringing in rail industry into Oshkosh that you probably haven't seen the likes of before, but we've already got multiple projects that we have not presented yet to the city, um, we've been working with the planning commission, but we're looking at some serious job creation as a result of this initial investment, so we're very grateful, and I'll echo what Brad said, we're very grateful for the partnership that we have with the city of Oshkosh. I would say in the railroad industry, it's very rare to have a partnership like this with a city that, that sees the value in the, uh, in the infrastructure that we have, and sees that as a tool for economic growth, so I'll just echo what Brad said, and thank you, and, uh, we look forward to getting started, so.
Thank you.
I have no further individuals registered.
We need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Mr. Davis, do we have a timeline on, so the neighbors can kind of have a flavor of how long it's gonna take Vinton to do all this and get it all set, and maybe the first cars loaded?
Uh, there is, is a timeline for getting this done, for the construction to occur this fall, probably gonna slop into the winter and potentially spring with the restoration. Uh, the relocation of the ramp and the catwalk is part of this project, so the people by Allerton won't see anything next spring once the windows open again, once the weather gets nice.
Okay, so we're removing some of the, those, that's part of the project, is remove some of that?
Relocating it.
Relocating that stuff.
Not the rail itself.
No.
Because there'll still be. Yes. There'll still be backup from, uh, Bemis. Yes. But it won't be loading there, and that's right what the big issue was.
Okay. So it's exciting, um, exciting, I mean, it could be open the door to a lot of possibilities.
So, no one else has their light lit? So would you please take the roll?
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
We have now council discussion, direction, direction is.
Seventeen four sixty-six.
Four sixty-six. Again, press your buzzer. Resolution seventeen dash four sixty-six, approve combination Class B license for Oshkosh Arena. City Clerk, is anyone that wishes to address this?
I do not have anybody registered to speak.
Thank you, bring it back to the.
Mr. Mayor, staff is recommending, there was some, uh, item on the application that was missing, and we believe it's appropriate for council to lay this item over. There's just a, a little thing in there that hasn't been answered, and so, uh, I just found out before the meeting, I wasn't aware of until just before the meeting, so.
So how long, how long are you asking us to lay it over?
Oh, next be, next meeting, it'll be, it's a, we just don't have the immediate information, and it's required in the application, and it was missing. We'll get it, we'll get it fixed.
All right, I would move to lay over seventeen four sixty-six until our next meeting.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll?
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
It's council discussion, direction, city manager and future agenda items, uh, future agenda items, the first is a budget workshop, September twentieth, beginning at five P.M.
It's gonna be capital improvements and, uh, debt service, that, that'll be the primary, uh, focus of our discussion.
And I will be out of town, so I will not be attending. Deputy Mayor Herman.
I will also be unable to make that meeting.
Okay. I may be recovering from my surgery, so I may, I may also miss that meeting, but, um, the five of you will be well, uh, covered with Ms. Larson and, uh, Mr. Robbie.
Uh, number twenty, uh, councilperson Allison Osby.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, being that we're covering dates, I did want to alert, uh, council as well as staff that on October tenth, uh, that council meeting, I will not be here for that date.
Okay, next on the, number twenty-eight, process to allocate available liquor licenses. I believe city manager Roloff has a few, few words.
Thank you. Uh, I wasn't aware until just before the meeting that the arena wasn't going to, uh, get done, so I'm gonna change my wording a little bit. Um, we have currently three licenses available after the recent discussions at the council in the last few months. Uh, the first one is allocated to the arena, that was something that was, uh, that we had talked about, uh, months ago, they finally got their application in, and we'll get it taken care of next time. So now we're down to two licenses. Um, under previous councils, because we haven't done a liquor license allocation in a number of years, um, typically what's been done is, uh, applicants come forward, they hear, uh, they make a presentation to council, and the council votes. That's a very simplified version, uh, one of the things that it, what we've done through that process is we've never really got in, in-depth information from the applicant. There's required information according to state law. The reason we pulled the arena was something was missing, but it's not, it, it doesn't get into, uh, some of the more detailed information that I think council may wish to see. Uh, my suggestion to council is to, uh, staff would like to prepare a supplemental application so that people can provide council with information that we've heard about before. Uh, what do, what do you anticipate, uh, selling? Uh, what's your fiscal impact, number of employees, things like that, so you can get a flavor for what, uh, what is more behind the application, not just who the registered agent is and all the, the required things, um, how you're planning to manage IDs and things like that. Those are things that they're required to do, but this will give you more information. With that said, I, I think it may also be appropriate, in the past, council would, uh, hear the presentations and vote immediately, and it really doesn't give you time to, to absorb some information that maybe you didn't learn until that evening. Uh, the application, the, the intent of the supplemental application is to give you The application, the intent of the supplemental application is to give you more ideas about what's going on, but that may not be sufficient either. So, my suggestion to council would be to hear presentations, do them at the beginning of the meeting. Typically, it's like a five-minute presentation, Q and A for council. And then my suggestion would be to, to lay it over and not take action. Just thank everybody for the presentations, and then you can come back in two weeks' sense. Not waste a lot of time, but just get yourself two weeks to kind of absorb it and bring it back to you. With that said, I reported to you that there's two available licenses after you count the arena out of that amount. We are aware of two groups that are already available, but we have not really advertised it. I think it's appropriate that we get the word out that there are two liquor licenses available. We are currently working on applying through the state to get designated an economic development district for the Sawdust District, to have liquor licenses available so that should something come up, we have an extra two licenses. I can't tell you today if those two will be sufficient for the Sawdust District. So, I think the council may wish to talk about how many licenses they want to say are available and ready. Council could say, the two that we think we'll get from the state, we're very high confidence level that we're gonna get them, but do we wanna wait for those so we know for sure? And if you do, do you think two are enough? If you think two are enough, then we can advertise two. If you think two are not enough, do you wanna reserve any more for that? We currently have one reserved for Marion Road. We've done this before, but we've been reserving that one for a number of years. So, the idea would be, do you want to perhaps reserve one or both? Because if you say you wanna reserve both, then there's nothing to advertise. But I think council needs to give staff direction on how many they think they wanna reserve for the Sawdust District, if any, or do you wanna wait until you, we get a definite answer from the state about this economic development district? That, have we applied for that, Mr. Davis, or have we?
That's something that the city would actually have to go through the process to create. So, there's some resolutions and assessments that are phrasals that need to be done. And then, once that's completed, we submit that to the state. So, it's basically in our court until we decide we wanna send it into the state.
Okay, so we have a little homework left to do before we do that. So, now that you're aware of that, so that's what I wanted to lay out for you tonight. I think it may be appropriate at the next agenda to get some direction, but that's the, kind of the scope of what we're thinking of. How many do you wanna reserve? We certainly plan on getting that done, but that'll take a process for us to go through. Will council need to adopt a resolution on that, Alan?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so we'll have to bring that back anyway, so we can work on that and get you. But do you wanna wait for those until you know you've got them before you do that? That might be another thing. Under no circumstances is council required to allocate these liquor licenses. The tendency is to do that because they can provide economic activity. But you're under no obligation to issue licenses even though you have them available. So, that's certainly food for thought as well. But I wanted to lay that out for you, so as we move forward and bring these things up, we'll probably put all that type of information in a memo, so you have it as you approach the meeting. But I wanted council to start thinking about that, because it's, ultimately, you're gonna have to decide what you wanna do with these licenses.
So, any council members do have questions, so council member, Paul Mary?
First of all, I'm assuming we're talking about, are we talking about Class Bs?
These are the full liquor licenses, yeah, the Class Bs.
Okay, okay. On that supplemental application that you referred to, so on the current application, we have a question that asks, let's see here, will your music, first of all, will you have any type of entertainment, yes or no, if so, what type? And when they indicate concerts, bands, this kind of thing, we have a question that says, will your music be kept at a level acceptable to the neighborhood? And in the previous instance, it was indicated, yes. So, my question would be on that supplemental application, you know, are we looking at being a little more specific with some of those things, such as, you know, how will you determine that the level is acceptable to the neighborhood? You know, is that a preliminary thing, or is it a measurement thing? Because, you know, many of our applications have come through where they've circled yes. But as my fellow council members can probably attest, we still, you know, have noise complaints. So, in any event, that would be one question. And then, how many do we actually anticipate needing to add if we do that economic development district?
The economic development district would allow us two additional.
Oh, they'll give us an extra, okay.
And they would have to stay within that district. They couldn't move anywhere at all. So, the question is, are those two enough? Because if you think that we'll have more activity in there, it's kind of a judgment call, it's kind of a guess, because until we get more development, but communities that are gonna be doing it are anticipating that they're trying to create some type of entertainment-type district. And there are a lot of requirements we have to go through. There's size limits and value minimums, I believe. So, those are the types of things that we have to get out there. So, that's two. If you think it's enough, then we have two that are free agents. If we, if you think two are not enough, then we would need some direction from council. Do you want us to reserve one or both of them? And then, we tell the applicants that are already there, we have one or none available at this time. We'll hang on to their application until then.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Mr. Roth, the one that's reserved for the Marion Road, that could be moved, though, right? Even though, because it's not in an economic development situation, correct?
The council has that ability.
Right, and then we have, so that's the one reserved. So, if we get the one from, or the two from, for the Sawdust District, we'd have two available. I, my recommendation, and you'll bring it back, but I think until we know, I don't think we should advertise the two out at this point. I think, we don't know, I mean, I wasn't able to make Madjan Oshkosh, I don't know, I mean, yes, Madjan Oshkosh. So, I didn't see what maybe came out of that discussion of what some things in Sawdust District, and I know there's some interest in that area. But until we really know, I think we, we wanna err on our side so that we can bring in that quality type of, of event or organization, restaurant, bar, whatever it might be, that would be attractive and a good fit for that area. So, I think we should just wait. And also, to council member Paul Mary's comment, I agree. I think we need, some of these are kinda open-ended, you know, in the sense that, you know, type of entertainment, what, you know, if it's like the arena, that's, that's probably not gonna be noise outside. But if it's an outside amplified situation, that's a different story. So, maybe we should have two questions. Is your music inside, or is your music outside? You know, Peabody's is a good example. When they play in the winter, inside, it's not around. But when they play outside in the summer, I can hear it from my house. So, you know, I think it bodes to have a second question. Is your music outside or inside? Because that makes a big difference.
Yeah, those are the types of things. I wrote specifics about noise, so I think it covers both of those issues. And Pam, do you have something, or?
I was gonna add that the supplement form that we're going to be creating, that's a questionnaire of what type of business, how many jobs are gonna be brought to the community, those questions. The application that you're looking at on your agenda are for those businesses that are already open. So, they're, they're two different forms.
But we can add, we can add whatever, because the form hasn't been created yet. So, we can, we can add whatever things you think are important. Anything comes up, between now and the time you give us direction, let us know, because we can, we can add it. It's just, you just type it up, we can do it.
Councilmember Pansky?
First of all, I do agree with the deputy mayor that we should wait until we see what we have for sure from the state. I do have a couple of questions. The first one is, how often can we apply for licenses in a new district? If we apply for the two, is there a timeframe in which we can do that again if we find out that business is booming and we need a few more? Can we?
Two is it?
Two is it, okay.
Nice try, I appreciate the effort.
But we could create another district if it meets all the requirements. So, we could do one on the east side of Main Street and potentially one on the west side if something like that would present itself.
But that minimum value, Alan, is what?
Yes, you'd have to get the minimum value of over twenty million dollars.
So, you, you've gotta talk a mega area that has?
New value.
New value.
It's new value as well.
New value.
Okay, interesting. Then, my next question is, we've been in a situation where something comes up very quickly, tiffs come in front of us very quickly. If somebody is looking for a license, development is happening at a, at a fast pace, can they ask council to waive the rules and adopt it on a first reading? Or are we still gonna do the two readings?
A liquor license is not an ordinance, so it would be my resolution.
But you had said that if some, they would come before us with the plan and the supplemental plan, and then we put it on the agenda again?
That's my suggestion, council can, can waive those at any time. That would be just more, when there's a competitive type of situation. But if there's one license, one applicant, like the arena, I mean, we plan to bring that back next week. That one, we feel very strongly that that needs to get done. That was, we discussed that with Mr. Pierce way back when. So, that's one of those cases where we're, we're gonna bring it right to you. But in the competitive environment, I know the mayor was in leadership Oshkosh. Anybody who's in, been in leadership Oshkosh, they don't, they do a mock council meeting, and they, they actually do that as one of their issues, and it's quite comical. I don't want it to be quite comical, I want it to be very serious. And because we have to be, you know, give everybody a shot, give everybody an equal shot at doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilperson Allison Osby?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you refresh my memory, is there still a liquor license attached to the old Pioneer property?
No, there is not.
I didn't think so.
Our belief and hope is that there are certain provisions in the law that allow exemptions and hotels of a certain capacity, certain dining capacity. We can get what's called a supplemental license if, or an exempt license, I think the term is, if we've allocated all our other licenses. So, my, I have to put a caveat when I said, you don't have to issue all your licenses.
Does it have to exceed three hundred or something?
Yeah, there's those types of things. So, once it meets that requirement, then the Pioneer would be okay. You know, we've had discussions with a potential buyer of the Pioneer. Everything we heard, they would, they would line up for that. But we'd have to allocate the licenses or reserve them appropriately so that we have no licenses to give up.
Okay.
So, it's, it's a, there's a little bit of art and science to making sure we can maximize the number. I try to look for those opportunities every chance we get. You know, one of the licenses that came back to us recently was because Fox River Brewery was able to get a state brewer's license, which didn't exist previously, but now it does, and they were able to surrender their license to us. That added one to, to the mix that we've been working on. So, we always look for ways to, to maximize those because they're very limited and very restrictive in how they can be used.
City Clerk, did you still wanna speak, or did you speak your piece already?
I spoke, thank you.
Out of sequence, shame on you. Deputy Mayor Herman?
Thank you, this is actually two, Pam. Pam, on that supplemental form, are we gonna, is that only for new applications? Or as renewals come up, we may wanna get some of that additional information for licenses?
At this point, the supplemental will be for new applicants. But if the council so wishes that every, are you thinking every year that they would complete a form?
Well.
When they file their paperwork with us?
I guess, probably not every year, but if they maybe did some significant changes to their establishment, would they, their license might, you know, maybe they expanded or something like that, where they've kinda changed, like, we'll take example, and I guess it would be a new license, but, well, actually Robbins. If that deal goes through and it's a whole different type of bar and whatever, would they get one of those forms?
That would be a new applicant, and we would have them go through that.
Even though the license is tied to the rest, to the?
Correct, we would still have them fill out.
That would still be considered new, okay.
Yes, we would still have them.
And I guess I'm just thinking there was a couple others over the years that have kinda changed what they, you know, did or didn't do. Or Beachcomber's a good example, they've expanded quite a bit. Now, they serve a lot of food there, they have an outdoor patio, and it's a very nice location. And, you know, maybe it's good to have some of that information on file when they, when they do renew their application.
Councilperson Paul Mary?
Just a follow-up to the exemption on the state brewer's license, then. So, does that mean Lake Fifth Ward or other entities wishing to have, like, a brewery, manufacturing-type setting are also exempt, and we may be seeing more of those kinds of applications coming in to?
You're reaching the limits of my knowledge of the brewery. I just know that we, they got one. And I don't know if city attorney or city clerk know the, kind of the nuances. We were surprised when they said they were gonna give it, surrender it because they got the license, but there must have been some advantage for them to do it. We were happy to take it back.
We were. You know, if businesses are interested in the brewery, they would, should contact our office, and we can look at the situation. And then, if it's available, that we can open up that license, it would be awesome.
Thanks.
Okay, I see no further wishing to speak. Number twenty-nine is briefing on potential interest by Oshkosh Corporation and Lake Shore Municipal Golf Course.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know there's a lot of questions and certainly a lot of passion with many people in the community about what's going on. I just wanna give a little briefing to council, so you kinda understand where, where this is going. The discussion of Oshkosh Corporation possibly building a new headquarters has generated a lot of interest. Our understanding or belief is that Oshkosh Corporation, as a Fortune 500 company, will be looking nationwide. So, this is not an issue of where's the best place in Oshkosh for, for us to put them. It's really where can we have the most competitive site? Staff looked at about a dozen different sites that, when we discussed what potential areas would be there. There are certain sites that I would love to see in a redevelopment area. But if they don't necessarily meet the criteria that a company of that magnitude would have, it's gonna be very difficult for us to convince them to go to one of those sites. As we looked at it, we anticipated criteria of size, access, and visibility as being very important to them. If you take a look at other large Fortune 500 companies that we have in the valley, high visibility, very easy public access. That is on their list of things that's typically there. So, staff evaluated those, and we were aware that things were going on, that we might be contacted by a, what's called a site selector, and we got no contact. And that concerned me. Now, there have been discussions of Lake Shore Municipal Golf Course. We had done some delineations so that we were prepared in case we, in case we received any inquiries, and we received no such inquiries. So, I felt it was necessary to, with no questions being asked, to at least reach out to Oshkosh Corporation. Number one, to let them know that we want them to retain their headquarters in our community. And that, and it was my suggestion, not council's, because this has not come before council. It was my suggestion that they consider Lake Shore Municipal Golf Course. As a result of that letter, we received a request from Oshkosh Corporation to, to access the site to do some soil testing. That's very common with any of these things. Whenever we deal with potential locations for economic development projects, they wanna get some information out there. And so, I finally granted them that information. I think I informed council that we'd received the letter about a week and a half ago. I didn't give, I didn't sign the access agreement until after staff reviewed it. City Attorney Lawrence and Mr. Davis, they both reviewed it. And we gave them the access permit on Friday last week, so they just received it. My understanding is they're gonna be doing it very shortly, and it shouldn't take very long. That'll determine whether they believe it meets all the requirements from a geotechnical standpoint that it can be a candidate. With that said, we don't know what other potential sites are there that they're considering. We don't know any other sites in Oshkosh that they may be considering. I know there's speculation, but we don't have that knowledge of those types of things. But we know that when we're competing with other national locations, that it's gonna have to be extremely competitive. It's not just a matter of finding a vacant site that we would like to see from a land use standpoint. And while many sites may meet some minimum criteria, like size, it's gotta be, it's more than just size. It's all those other issues, and we have to anticipate those things. So, the idea behind it is, Oshkosh Corporation would like to recruit and retain talent. And this is part of, I think, what they believe to be that, the case, that they need a, a great site. So, we've given them permission to look at those things, we'll find out where it goes from there. I think there's also some misunderstanding, and if not, there's certainly just a passion, because people are passionate about the golf course. This is not for a factory. This is not for storage of vehicles. This is for a corporate campus-type headquarters with a modern building, for a modern office building, similar to what you see in other communities that have these types of things. The idea would be the balance of the site. Obviously, when you, when you're dealing with a golf course, it's all or nothing with a golf course. You can't have a seventeen-hole golf course or any, anything like that. So, it would be incumbent upon us to say, if this was something we even wanted to entertain, what would it look like for the remainder of the site? And in, my belief is that if this is something we wanna do, this creates an opportunity for us to add recreational amenities that currently either don't exist or just exist in a very small area. Clearly, the biggest one that people talk about is access to the river, a river walk, continuing the river walk we have throughout the city. Certainly, an easy one. But there's a lot of public input, I think it would be appropriate for that. I know there's some other questions about the city's doing this to cover some debt. That's not even close to being correct. Proceeds from a golf course- Proceeds from a golf course like this would be a policy issue for council. If we were going to do something like this, you replace these resources with resources to use for recreation, and that would be the appropriate thing to do. Again, that would be council, that's just my off-the-cuff comment that you'd want to use it for, for public recreation. We're taking away recreation, we add back recreation, but if you can add a diverse variety of recreation, I think you add value to the community. Now, golfers may not agree with that, and I certainly respect that. But we have to ask ourselves if, number one, this is something we want to consider, and number two, what do we want to do in order to retain a legacy company that can have millions of dollars of economic impact in this area? So, I'm not sure if there's any additional questions. We're not in a position to have a closed session with council about this because we don't have any specifics that we can share with you for you to negotiate or even discuss. I think we need to find out what possibilities are there. I've directed staff to put together some possibilities that the community could consider, that council could consider. What other alternate uses could be there if a golf course wasn't there? It's more than just, do we want a golf course or not a golf course? How do we want our recreation amenities to look in our community? And do we have opportunities to add on to what we already have? So, while some people may view it as a reduction, I certainly respect that opinion, but are there opportunities to enhance our recreation palette of amenities that we have available for the community? With that, I'm happy to answer any questions about things that I'm aware of, but again, Oshkosh Corporation ultimately makes the decision on if they even want to consider this site. So, I can't really answer questions on behalf of Oshkosh Corporation. I can only answer questions related to this as a potential site.
Councilman Peck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Roloff, you indicated site selector, so that would mean that most likely they're not only looking at Oshkosh, the valley area, Wisconsin, they are also looking probably nationally, is that correct?
I believe that that is correct.
The time you get a site selector.
Yeah, and we, you know, you recall, I forwarded you a copy of a site selection agreement that we did not sign because it was totally unapplicable to the city, but that was a firm based out of Chicago, they're a site selector, nationally known. They're not just looking in this immediate area, they're looking nationwide.
Yeah, and I know that several of Oshkosh Corp. competitors are located in the DC area, have located their corporate headquarters in the DC area to be closer to their big customers. And I believe, I read an article earlier today that talked about 450 jobs presently. Miles, help me out here, it was on your site. So, there's 450 jobs there now with the possibility of several hundred more coming at whatever, at some point in time.
I'll take responsibility because Mr. McGuire was taking them off of me, so you're off the hook, Miles.
Okay, but...
But those were estimates that we put together, that we believe that there's about a 450-job group there and a potential for as much as 200. I think it's a fair estimate from staff.
And those are professional jobs, engineers, accountants, finance, marketing, the types of high-paying, family-sustaining jobs that people talk about, correct?
We've asked Oshkosh Corporation to give us that detail because I think we need to know that answer. And a minute, I think it would be similar to, you may remember Bemis Healthcare Packaging, they give us an estimate of average wages and things like that, and that's what we are hoping to get from Oshkosh Corporation. I think that gives you good flavor for the economic impact, but if you, you can run some numbers off of that alone, off of, if our number of 450 is correct, with higher-level corporate jobs, you know, you're talking millions of economic impact in the headquarters alone. That says nothing about the factories, because we're not talking about the factories here. We're only talking about the corporate headquarters. And as you said, corporate headquarters are often relocated to be near other areas for other reasons. A lot of it's to attract talent because there's a greater concentration in, say, a Chicago or a Washington DC. But Fortune 500 companies can be successful if they have the right location.
You know, and, you know, earlier tonight, we heard that the golf course has been around 100 years. Oshkosh Corp. has been around 100 years in this community. It is called Oshkosh Corp., and they have had quite an impact on this community as well, and I'm not, you know, arguing merits or anything now, but the key point is, is that right now, there is no there-there, correct? There's no offer, there's no plan, there's no nothing out there, correct?
That's correct, and that's why I can't even have a closed session with council because legally, I have nothing to show you.
So, until there's some there-there, everything out, everything out in the public realm, everything out there now is just speculation.
I think we need to wait until after they do their soil borings, and once they do that, then, if they're interested or not, they'll let us know if we're being considered. I don't know what other sites are being considered, excuse me, they haven't disclosed that information to us, and frankly, I don't expect them to do that. They, they're under no obligation to do that.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Mr. Roloff, you were on the radio this morning, and you were pretty emphatic that the parks belong to the citizens of Oshkosh, and you were talking about that, but then you were emphatic that it can't go to a referendum. Can you explain to the public why this decision is the council's and the council's only and not the taxpayers of Oshkosh?
I'll probably defer to the city attorney a little bit. The question was about, does this have to go to referendum, or can the public force it to go to referendum? My answer in that was no, and I stand by that, and city attorney may care to comment on that.
Right now, we don't have a provision that would require it to go to referendum. Public could, or someone could bring a direct legislation forward unless the council sets a special election for that purpose. The next general election that that referendum could pass at would be this spring. My understanding is that the timeline would probably put that past whenever decisions would be made in this case. So, it wouldn't be timely enough to affect it unless you, as the council, ordered a special election. There are also timelines related to that, which you can't order an election for next week if you want your city clerk not to go crazy, but...
Right. Well, and that's a question I guess I would like to ask Pam, because that was asked of me of a citizen today. If there is a petition, is it based on, you know, when they get like 6,000 signatures, is it the requirement that so many people from the last election, it's not the 68,000 population of the city, it's those who voted in the last general election, the number versus the signed petitions?
Yes, it's a percentage of the last presidential election. And then, they have 60 days to collect that, those signatures, and then I have a timeframe to review it, and then they have also a timeframe to correct those. But that would be past the timeframe.
Just kind of relaying information, I mean, since this all hit, council's the ones getting the phone calls. I don't know, maybe Mr. Roloff's gotten a few phone calls or emails, but my mailbox is pretty full every day, along with some phone calls. So, I just wanted, you know, there are questions that I couldn't answer, and so I just wanted to get that out there so that citizens are listening on the radio, TV, in the audience now knows what some of those requirements would be. And obviously, yeah, timeline is a very critical thing here, I'm sure, you know, because my feelings are, if it goes forward, I sure won't want to see them chop up the golf course, which they're going to do no matter what, if they would purchase it, but wait for three to five years to build their office complex. So, I wouldn't want to see that happen either, so timelines are critical. Thank you.
I get the buzzer, so it's my turn to talk. I want to follow up what Councilman Peck said. I think the major issue here that doesn't seem to get discussed as much as it should is jobs. There is currently 100, I hear the figure, 450 jobs, more in the future. That's a lot of employment for any community. And I think that would secure the financial viability and sustainability of Oshkosh, the residents of Oshkosh and their families. You've heard me say a number of times what has disappeared from, the companies that have disappeared from Oshkosh for one reason or the other. And I don't think this should be taken lightly. This is very serious. This is serious business for the future of this city. The decision that happens, this corporation for the next 25 or 50 years will affect the city of Oshkosh. So, I think we should focus on the financial benefits overall to the community, which is high, high employment, high paying, higher-paying jobs. It will affect every, it'll ripple through the economy from housing to restaurants to you name it, it'll affect the entire community. If it goes the other way, we will kill the housing market, it'll have a severe impact on everything from restaurants to stores to our ability to main, to maintain some of the quality-of-life assets in the community, like Menominee Park, South Park, True Park. So, I think we should focus heavily on the employment benefits that it will give the city of Oshkosh for the very long term. My light's off.
That's all I have on my briefing, Mr. Mayor.
Next is a second opportunity for citizens to address the council. Does the city clerk have anyone that would like to speak?
Yes, I have one individual, and I apologize in advance if I mispronounced this. Iftekar Malak, 1643 Maricopa Drive.
Okay. They will move on to council announcements and statements. There is nothing there. I did add one thing in that. Jake, do you have the poster? This is to promote an event called Monster Bash, which is being hosted, or sponsored by the Oshkosh Zoological Society. It'll be Saturday, October 21st, at the Menominee Park Zoo. It's a great event. All the proceeds will go to hire and train people who work at the zoo, educate, education coordinators. So, I encourage everyone to, it's only $20, a lot of fun going on, food from different restaurants in the city. And for more information, their email is www.oshkoshzoo.org. So, you've got plenty of time to plan your evening on the 21st of October. Costumes are encouraged.
What are you going to wear? What am I going to wear?
All right, we're now at city manager announcements and statements. Mr. Roloff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple items in your agenda packet. Ms. Larson, our finance director, has given you a letter explaining our desire to extend our contract with Schenk to do our audit for an additional year. This should be about the time we should be going out to bid on this, but given our transition to our new enterprise resource accounting module, our accounting system, we feel it's necessary and beneficial to us to maintain them so that they can assist us with the transition, because that can often create problems when you're bringing somebody in from the outside during that transition. So, with the transition going, I approve that, and Ms. Larson prepared the memo so I could inform council about that. Similarly, every other year, we do pavement condition survey, that's the PESR rating, and right now, staff-wise, we're a little shorthanded in the engineering area. So, we've approved a contract with AECom for approximately $55,000 to do that this year. Basically, you go through every road in the city and you evaluate the condition. That's the PESR rating that you see in the CIP. We're required to do that every two years. So, with our staffing situation, we felt it was appropriate to get AECom to do that. The county was not available, they've done it for us in the past as well, but they don't have the staffing either to get that done. So, those are the two things, and then there's an arena update. There's really not much, except take a look at our online camera, you can see the progress is doing very well. We're told around schedule. Project, the Public Works project is going on schedule as well, so we're pleased with that progress, and we'll keep you updated as that moves along.
Councilman Perry, Pal Mary, would you like to say something?
Just a question, Mr. Roloff. So, on that, on the PESR contract update, it was, I was asked whether or not, because we do so few street updates and improvements, whether or not it was necessary to do a complete full PESR assessment, and perhaps Mr. Robbie, you could speak to that.
Hello, Mr. Robbie.
Yes, Wisconsin Department of Transportation requires us to do a complete analysis every two years.
Okay.
And I would add that doing Bay Shore, Lake, and Evoline in one season plus others is not a few feet of concrete.
Well, the conditions of the pavement change, and that's really why they ask us to do it on a biannual basis.
Not to mention the new New York.
Yeah. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I will turn it over now to Deputy Mayor Herman, who has a motion to go into a closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that following adjournment of this meeting, the council may convene in the closed session to discuss bargaining options, strategy, and parameters related to the negotiation of collective bargaining agreements with local number 316 IAFF, Oshkosh Fire Department, Oshkosh Fire Department Chief Officers, Oshkosh Professional Police Officers Association, Oshkosh Police Supervisor Association, ASME 796, transit, pursuit to section 19.85, parent 1, parent E of the Wisconsin State statutes, where competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session, and pursuant to section 19.85-1C of the Wisconsin State statutes to discuss the performance evaluation and compensation regarding the city manager and employee over which the common council has jurisdiction and exercises responsibility.
Second.
Could you please take a roll?
Pal Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Cap?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Kariette Seven?
I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.